Good morning, everybody. In accordance with Sections forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act nineteen ninety as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning that applies to property, permission to extend or alter lawful non-conforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new lots. We acknowledge the land we are meeting on as a traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishnaabe, the Chipewa, the Hadnashoni, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, and Métis people. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty thirteen with the Mississaugas of the Credit. Committee of Adjustment public hearings are now conducted in a hybrid in-person and virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submissions in person, and others will participate virtually by electronic means through WebEx, an online digital platform. The meetings are also streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearings may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and have registered in advance will be connecting with their computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone, and have the option of participating via video or audio only. All virtual participants will automatically be muted on entry. When your item is called, you'll be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. We ask that you mute your devices until you are called on to speak. Those participating by video appearance will temporarily be upgraded to panelist when your item is being held, and during that time, your camera will be enabled. You will only be visible during your five-minute allotted speaking time, and at all other times, your video will be disabled, and you'll be reinstated as an attendee. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Those participating through WebEx are not allowed to use shared screen or any other panelist controls during video appearance. People attending in-person today who wish to receive a copy of the committee on an application must fill out a decision request card, and those participating virtually need to submit a written request for decision by email. Please ensure you include your name, your address, and your email address, because the Committee of Adjustment and the Toronto local appeal body will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto local appeal body, or in some limited circumstances, to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. Only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, specified persons, and public bodies, as those terms are defined in the Planning Act, are permitted to appeal decisions of the Committee of Adjustment. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. All right, for the hearing this morning, I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda. When you make your submission, when an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation, and when the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the chair should they wish to speak to the committee. Each speaker, including the applicant or agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. Any presentation or other materials you wish to submit to the committee must have been emailed in advance of the hearing. Staff and committee members cannot accept materials at the hearing today. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first, and will make a presentation to the committee on the application. Again, the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application if substantially revised to ensure the revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice of the application are informed of the changes. Then individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Generally, we call in speakers in the hearing room, and then those online. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they finish their presentation, and when all speakers are finished, the applicant or agent has the opportunity to rebut those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion, and I will take the matter into committee for decision. All right, before we get to the first item, are we have any minutes to adopt? Mr. Deputy Secretary Treasurer?
Are we, is this the minutes? That's where, sorry, I'm trying to get my.
Yeah, we'll just start, is there any confirmation of minutes?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair, we have one set of minutes to approve this morning. It's from the June twenty-six, twenty twenty-five hearing. Present was Mr. Allison, Mr. Maziari, Ms. Sankar, Ms. Kassen, and Mr. Cubo.
All right, we have a motion to adopt those minutes.
Through you, Mr. Chair, yes, I forward a motion to adopt the minutes.
Right, I have a seconder by Mr. Niffel, all in favor. All right, that's unanimous, that motion carries. All right, any declarations of interest of panel or staff for any items in the morning time slot? All right, no declarations of interest, thank you. Are there any files that need to be closed?
Through you, Mr. Chair, there are no files to close today.
All right, Mr. Deputy Secretary Treasurer, do we have any deferral requests?
Through you, Mr. Chair, at the ten a.m. time slot, we have one deferral request. It's item number six, twenty-seven Cortlandt Avenue.
All right, twenty-seven Cortlandt Avenue, this is item number six. The purpose of the application is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a two-story rear addition with a basement walk-up and a new deck. Variances for FSI and side yard setback on file, I see material from the applicant and a letter from the TTC. All right, we have our agent or applicant with us?
Through you, Mr. Chair, he's online, but he's not able to access his microphone. He should restart his device or do something, you know, because he's not available.
All right, very well. So we're asking for him to restart, reboot at this time? Okay, I'm going to stand this item down while we, while our agent reboots. Let's move to item number one. Thirty-one Baycrest Avenue. Purpose of the application is to alter the existing one-story detached dwelling by constructing a one-story rear addition. We have variances for lot coverage, building length, and depth. I've got on-file material from the applicant. Do we have our applicant or agent with us?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, and the committee members. Can, can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes, your name and address for the record, sir.
My, my name is Ravinder Singh. I'm the authorized agent for thirty-one Baycrest Avenue, application number A zero-two-four-one.
All right, I don't see any other speakers. I'm going to ask my colleagues whether or not they would like a presentation from you. Give us a moment here. Just confirming, Ms. Sankar Peralta, any concern? I just wanted, I didn't have you on my screen. I just want to confirm if you'd like a presentation on this item.
Uh, no, not necessary, thank you for asking.
Okay, all right, any questions for the agent or applicant? All right, sir, it doesn't appear that we require presentation. If it's all right with you, we can take this matter into committee.
Yes, please.
All right, moving into committee now for item number one. Yes, Mr. Niffel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think this is a very straightforward application. It's a modest addition. I can't see that it actually imposes any difficulties for neighbors or the neighborhood. I'd like to move approval without any conditions.
Right, do I have a seconder, second by Ms. Sankar Peralta, all in favor? That is unanimous, that application is approved. Item number two, forty-nine Addison Crescent. The purpose of the application is to construct a new two-story duplex with an integral garage. Variance is for east side yard setback, pedestrian entrance height, encroachment of a platform into a front yard setback, and a front yard setback for building and driveway width. On-file material from the applicant, email from Metrolinks, memo from Urban Forestry, ten letters of concern from number forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, forty-seven, forty-eight, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-six, and fifty-four-three, sorry, forty-three, fifty-six, Addison Crescent, and fourteen, Canfield Place, as well as a late letter from Counselor Burnside, and some additional letters in opposition from area residents. We have our application, sorry, our agent with us? Ah, in-person, great, welcome this morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, my name is Noorshin Mazanfarri from hyphen Studio thirty-four twenty-nine Gangas Street, unit number five.
Welcome, all right. We'll ask for a presentation, get staff to get the five minutes up on the screen whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you so much. I, I'd like to start with my, very last page of my presentation material. This case has been before committee on May twenty-ninth, and this is the brief description of what has happened and what we have done this for the second committee today. As you see, we have removed from original eleven variances, we have removed six of them, and we are here with only five variances. Three of them shown with green color are improved. And just to give you a brief presentation about what happened on the last hearing, we had very lengthy discussions in the committee, and at the end, the major concerns of the committee panel was the size of, the number of variances related to the front yard. So to address those concerns, we have removed the variance for the porch height, the canopy setback, the soft landscaping, width of stairs at the front, and also we have improved the height of entrance variance. In addition, we have removed the wall height variance and the variance for the rear deck. And to address the concerns regarding the stormwater management and flooding, we have, we are proposing permeable surface for the driveway, and also we have changed the rear deck to wood deck. It was a concrete deck in the previous application. And I believe in general, what we are asking today is very modest and meets the four test. Now, if you kindly go back to the first page of my presentation material, I just go through the variances one by one. For variance number one, we are asking for east side setback for eight inches. And if you can zoom on the east side, you can see that this variance is only for the front portion of the building. At the rear, we have almost four meter setback and even more than required. And this is a very minor item only for the front portion on one side. And on the west side, we are completely in compliance. The height of entrance, we have only six inches deviation from the allot height, and we also have removed the height of the porch. So only the first floor height or the main entrance is a variance. Then we have a variance for the front setback. We are asking for seven point sixty-two rather than nine point eighty-eight. And you know better than me that the front setback is calculated based, based on the average of the two neighbors on both sides. The west neighbor is at seven point sixty-seven setback, and we are lined up with that neighbor. On the east side, the neighbors building a step back way too far, and the setback of the existing building on the east side is twelve point zero-nine. So the average is required to be nine point eighty-eight. And what we are doing, if you go to the next page, please, this is the existing situation of the neighborhood. As you see, many of them has the same setback, almost twenty-five feet at the front. If you count them, majority of the homes have the same setback, even a bit less than what we are proposing. And what we are proposing is exactly the same as the existing building. So we are keeping the existing situation. And the reason is that if we push the building back, then probably the neighbor on the west side will have problems as we encroach into the rear setback, and then we should have rear yard variance. And by pushing the building forward, we are trying to have a lineup, a street escape at the front. And in consequence of this variance, we have a porch encroachment. If you go back to the site plan, the first page, please, the porch encroachment is calculated from that bolt dash line that shows the required front setback. And the porch encroachment is, since it's calculated from that line, it seems so exaggerated. The actual porch is only one point sixty-eight meter. And the last one is the, is for the driveway width. We are asking for seven point seventy-seven rather than six meter allot. And we have removed all the variances for the soft landscaping and open landscaping. So basically, what we are proposing doesn't impose any negative impact in regards to the landscaping and what, stormwater management.
Just some final words, I've been a little generous at the time.
I will wrap up soon. We could have the same amount of hard landscaping. It's just a different label as a driveway. I can stop here.
Yeah, we may have some questions as well, and there'll also be an opportunity for a rebuttal of some of the concerns that may come up. At this time, I'll ask my colleagues if they have any questions. Okay, so we're going to hear from our next speakers.
Okay, thank you.
Is anybody here in person to speak to this item? Welcome, who would like to come down first?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Christine Mann, and I live at fourteen Canfield Place. I've lived there for twenty-four years. My home, like the other homes on Canfield Place, backs on to the properties on Dunn Karen. I have lived in Don Mills for over thirty years. It's a wonderful community, recognized as one of the city's first planned communities. The balance of green space and development as it was planned works very well. I would like to highlight a couple of concerns that I have about the proposal before you today. The application does not specify the proposed percentage coverage, but it appears that it would be significantly higher than other homes in the area. The requested changes to setbacks and planned paving would result in a considerable loss of green space. Additionally, the proposed three-car garage and driveway are notably out of character for the neighborhood. There are no other driveways that size. You also have my letter, which outlines in greater detail my concerns with redevelopment and the negative impacts of green space loss on both the adjacent neighbors and the effects on the wider community. But I'd just like to wrap up by saying that Don Mills is a community with special characteristics and has thrived under sound zoning policies for over seventy years. As the neighborhood continues to redevelop, it is important to consider the cumulative effects of multiple variance requests. Therefore, I respectfully ask that in considering this application, the committee upholds reasonable limits on loss of green space and keeps in mind the precedent that the proposed variances could set for the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Please hold off on any applause. I have some questions, so you, you back on to the subject property, then?
Not directly, I am next to.
The, the street that would back, the lots that would back on to, sorry.
So I would be one over from that. So where the, I'm not directly behind that house, but, so more or less kitty corner?
Okay, and I, so this application came before us in the spring, and I guess part of my concern at the time was, in, in part, due to the proximity of the rear yard setback to some of the structures, rear main wall. They've since come into compliance with that. So if we're looking at the, the variances that are before us today, are there any specific that are of concern? And, and the second part of it is, is that concern have to do with massing at the front of the property? Is there still concern with massing at the rear?
So my primary concern is what I have seen as the neighborhood is being redeveloped, and there's a lot going on. A lot of the redevelopment is in character, and even often not far from the overall footprint that is in the planning. But we have a problem with water in our area. The water table is very high. Often, these new homes end up with flooded basements or cause flooding in adjacent homes and adjacent yards. And in general, that is a problem for the city and for city infrastructure. And I, I am concerned about the continual eroding of green space. So the overall footprint is really the, my main concern.
Okay, all right, thank you. I'm going to ask my colleagues if they have any questions for you. All right, none, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have some others that have come down today as well. Welcome.
Thank you. Nice to see you again. My name is Paul Graham, and I live at fifty-one Addison Crescent, the property adjacent to forty-nine Addison. I'm here to express concerns about this second proposed development, which we believe will have a significant and negative impact on our property and our neighborhood. Just a couple of, a couple of points I wanted to make out here. One, the proposed front yard setback is seven point six-two meters, while the required minimum is nine point eight-eight meters. Our home, as, as mentioned previously, is uniquely setback at twelve point oh-nine meters, and that is a difference of four point four-seven meters, which is substantial. Further to that, the side yard setback currently is four point eight-five meters, which the proposal seeks to reduce to one point six meters, which is a drastic change. These proposed changes will significantly increase the massing alongside of our property, which is a big concern for us. For context, the, there are, there are two other story, two-story homes on our side. They are at number forty-five and fifty-seven, which have been redeveloped, okay? They have setbacks of nine point five and nine meters respectively. It's important, I feel, to point out that some bungalows on the streets, yes, they have smaller setbacks, but two-story homes don't. The three-car garage, and the proposal includes a three-car garage. As we know, the lot is only fifty-five feet wide, which is not consistent with any precedence on the street. The garage, the design, drives the design of an exceptionally wide driveway and causes the front entrance to encroach unnecessarily on the front yard. As previously mentioned, again, it's a significant reduction in green space, especially to the front yard setback, which is out of character with all other homes in the area and disrupts the visual rhythm of the street. We also have some concerns about the tree, the health and survival of a mature locust tree located on the front lawn. The proposed design and excavation work would put this tree at significant risk, and no clear protection plan has been presented. I took a look the other day, there are roots that are protruding out of the ground, and as proposed right now, that driveway will come in within inches of those roots. I don't feel that, in conclusion, we don't feel that any meaningful changes in this second submission have been made, and the issues identified in the Committee of Adjustment's original refusal remain unaddressed for the most part. In essence, this is the same proposal, and we respectfully urge the committee to reject it for the same reasons outlined in the original notice of decision on May twenty-ninth. Thank you very much for your time and consideration today.
Thank you. I'm just going to ask staff, do we have that diagram with the, sort of a figure diagram with all of the front yard setbacks? I think it was, it was put up from the applicant's submission. Yeah, thank you. You made a comment about sort of your house being a bit of an anomaly on the street. It's setback further than a lot of the houses.
Call it a unicorn, almost.
A little bit of a unicorn, yeah. So I, I mean, that's a very compelling diagram in terms of, you know, looking at, when we're looking at front yard setback, we want to ensure that, you know, it's sort of a layman's terms. We don't want to create a massing that just sort of gets built and pops out on the street beyond all of the other houses. But in this case, part of the reason, at least the way that I understand it, is that because the requirement, their, their setback requirement's nine point eight-eight, in part because it's an average of the two, and in part because they're next door to you. It's a unicorn property, it's a set a little bit further back. In your opinion, like, you said that it sort of sticks out, but I look at the diagram, and I, I'm looking at the majority of setbacks on the street are kind of more or less in line, they're putting forth, you know, just shy of eight meters. So, I mean, how do you?
Well, the, the, the properties that are, any of the properties that are below eight meters, you know, so seven point six-two, whatever, seven point six-seven, seven point six-two.
Yeah.
They're bungalows.
Okay.
So they're not, I mean, so I, I submitted some pictures just to show some visual of, of our, of our situation.
Yeah, staff, actually, I don't know, staff can pull those up as well, if we get some of those photos. It's Mr. Graham, right?
Yes.
Yeah, from Mr. Graham's submission. Because I'm, I'm trying to, the reason I'm asking these questions, I'm, I'm trying to determine where the sort of appropriate datum line would be on this street for a front main wall.
Sure.
I also acknowledge that the other immediate neighbor, it's a bit of a unicorn property too, in that it, the way that it's configured, and we see this from time to time in North York, the front of the house is actually facing the side of the lot. So they'll have a more of a generous setback on the side, but the majority of the property, the front face, is actually facing the side lot line.
Correct.
Again, that neighbor may be afforded a little bit more extension into the side yard, because really, it's a side of a house, of that massing that's extending into the front yard setback. So it's, it's not easy for us, at least for me, to determine where that datum line is. So, yeah, maybe we can.
Yeah, and, and you may, I just realized, I messed up my dates, and I, oh, there we go, right there. Those pictures there. You know, what I'm trying to illustrate is that if you, is, you know, if you look at that, that's a bungalow. Right now, it's setback four point eight-five, you know, the side backs four point eight-five. The front yard side back, I believe, existing is seven point six-two, which, you know, I get that's the, but it's. six two, which, you know, I get that's the, but it's a bungalow, so it's not overbearing or anything. You're gonna bring that over four point eight five meters, give or just under, and then you're going to, you know, put it forward, you know, put it to seven point six two there. You're just gonna, I'm gonna have this massive fifteen-foot massing that suddenly, if not one story, it's two stories, that, I mean, I could talk about the sunlight, but probably not what you want to hear at here. But what I, again, wanted to illustrate is that I appreciate that, you know, you're looking at the average, but I'm asking for some consideration because, I mean, I can't control that my house is twelve point oh nine meters back. I did redevelop it. All I did was throw a second story up. I didn't, you know? But if you look at number forty-five and fifty-seven on that street.
I was gonna ask, what is the setback at fifty-seven?
Fifty-seven is nine meters.
Is nine meters.
Yeah, and then forty-five is, I believe, nine and a half meters, right? And so that's what I'm asking is for some consideration in regards to that, because to me, that's a precedence for a second, for two-story homes. This is a bungalow, seven point six two existing, it works, but it doesn't work with the size of the house they want to build, which I believe originally was thirty-six percent lot coverage. Now it's thirty-four point nine percent, which is.
Fair enough. That is helpful. So just sorry to interrupt. So you, number forty-five, you're putting forth is it got a nine point five meter setback, more or less? And then you said there was nine meters on another new build on that side of the street?
Yes. Yeah, I'm not sure when that one was built. It may have been built like eight or ten years ago, but.
Because as, this is a neighborhood where there are a lot of houses that get torn down and we have a new house built in a different massing, a different form. And for us, it's, I think it's important, we're trying to figure out, how do the two come together? Where do we, where's that datum line? Where we can, you know, figure out what's, what's the appropriate?
I appreciate that.
Front yard setback? So, that, thank you, that's helpful. I'm gonna ask my colleagues if they have any other question.
I just wanted to make one point.
Very quickly, yeah.
Yeah, the, the front yard setback is a character of the neighborhood and, you know, that's been honored, you know, across the neighborhood. That is one thing that's always honored and, you know, just like I said, seven point six two would be unprecedented on the street pretty much, so.
Okay, fair enough.
Okay. Any other?
All right, other questions? Moment here. None? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello?
Welcome.
Hi. My name is Leslie Ng. I live at forty-five Addison Crescent and I am here to oppose the, the front setback of this new house being seven point six two. It should remain at nine point eight eight meters. This is not a minor variance as it could affect the whole look and character of the neighborhood. My second objection is the footprint taking thirty-four point eight percent of the lot. The following houses, the new builds, recent new builds, at forty Addison, fifty Addison, twenty-three Addison, and forty-five Addison, all come under thirty percent of the footprint coverage. So I see no reason why we should allow thirty-four point eight percent here, as it would affect the whole look and character of the neighborhood. And that's it. Any questions?
You raised some concern with the lot coverage, I understand?
Yes.
I don't think there's a variance for lot coverage.
Sorry? Oh, yeah, there was in the past. I don't know why it's not here now, but.
I think they've come into compliance with the bylaw, so they're not seeking relief from lot coverage. I will allow the applicant to provide some clarification as to why the variances have been moved, but my understanding is they've made some modifications to the application to come into compliance with a number of the variances. So we only have five variances before us that we're looking at today.
Guys, I didn't see many changes on all the setbacks, so I don't know how they comply with that.
Well, I'm gonna ask them what modifications were made to come into compliance. All right, thank you. Questions? None, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Yes, good morning. I'm Peter Bride. I, I'm the owner of forty-seven Addison, the right next door neighbor. Thank you for addressing these concerns and thanks to all the neighbors who have kindly taken time out of their days to show up. We're here with the best of intentions. In recent years, it's been fashionable trend supporting the notions of duplexes, triplexes, and other, you know, garden suites and so forth. And the city council has, not dictated, but they hand down policy and planning staff have got to report or evaluate applications accordingly. And of course, on this application, planning has had no comment. Now, certainly, you know, higher density approaches work really well in other, in other neighborhoods, but not in Canada's first planned community, which is Don Mills. And so the, the glut of unsold condominiums and so forth in, just in the immediate neighborhood will indicate that we really don't have a housing crisis in Don Mills. What we do have though is an application in front of us that has been kind of opaque and deceptive in many ways, right from the beginning. This is the first committee of adjustment application I have come across, which does not address percentage coverage of the property. And unless you look, drill right into the documents that have been posted online with the plans, no one would know that what they're looking for is the thirty-five percent coverage on a, where the zoning is twenty-five percent. So basically asking for forty-two hundred square feet where twenty-seven fifty is what would be an acceptable normal within the parameters of the zoning. So, and one of the other ways, one of the other things that is concerning is we have, I have a copy here of a zoning review waiver. And can the committee comment on zoning review waivers and how they impact?
Yeah, I'll just interject it. Staff will just note the clock. We're only looking at the five variances that are before us today, so there's nothing for lot coverage.
Why not?
It complies with the bylaw or they're not requesting the variance. But that doesn't mean if they, for example, they go to apply for a building permit, if they don't comply with the bylaw, regardless if we've approved other variances, they're still gonna get flagged on that item, right? They can't.
Well, then what redress or recourse do the neighbors have in a situation like that where we've gone through two committee of adjustment exercises with the best of intentions and trying to be good neighbors and helpful to the process? We have nothing against the idea of this home being rebuilt, but the main problem is that there's a three-car garage across the front. There is no house, no infill house anywhere in the neighborhood that has a three-car garage.
See, you bring that up and that's a fair argument, because there's a variance before us for driveway width, right? So that's directly related to the variance. We can take that into consideration. But I, you know, your time is valuable, right? Like I really encourage you to focus on the five variances that are before us. If we start going off into other.
Okay, the front yard setback is a concern.
Right.
And the composition of the front yard setback is because of the three-car garage. That footprint being taken up with the extra exit or entrance strategy is, compromises the footprint available to make a reasonably good composition to get you from grade to the front door. So that's really the main thing and I, I don't really have too much more to add to that.
No, fair enough, but you, you raise a point. I just, I really want to focus us on.
Yeah, but it's alarming and mystifying that the, they're allowed to stick handle around this issue of percentage coverage, which really should be a topic that we address here.
Yeah, my advice would be to reach out to planning or the zoning examiner and, because ultimately, they're the ones that are checking for compliance. That's not our role here. We're not zoning examiners and I, if they're missing variances, that's on them. It's their responsibility to ensure what they need from us is up to date and compliant. That said, I, on the topic, your, your property is the one directly adjacent and it is the one, if I'm not mistaken, with the front elevation that, from a, from a massing standpoint, faces the, the opposite side lot line. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, our house is situated perpendicular on the lot, six feet in from the lot line.
And would you say that that type of construction orientation is prevailing on the street or is that a bit of an anomaly? To your other, the immediate neighbors can say, is it also a bit of a unicorn property in that respect?
Well, there are a number of them in the original Don Mills plan that were built like that.
Yeah.
So you have a wider driveway and, and bigger side yard. So the front entrance is on the long side of the house as opposed to facing the street.
Okay, all right, fair enough.
Okay, so.
I'm gonna ask my colleagues if they have any questions from you. My system is just, so staff know, I'm in a reboot right now, which is why probably if people can't see me online, as long as they can hear me.
Is it restarting or?
It's restarting. It'll take a bit, but as long as, if there's any reason we need to stop, let me know, but I will continue as long as my audio is still working.
Okay, so Mr. Chair, if you're voting, just verbalize, make sure you know that you're voting in affirmative or in a negative.
Okay, very good. I should also ask, I'm gonna just, staff, if you can just ensure I can see Ms. Ankar Peralta on the screen, I want to ensure, when I'm asking questions, that she's, her response is being broadcast. Okay, any questions for this individual? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Much appreciated. Is there anybody else here in person to speak to this item? Okay. And staff, do we have anybody online? All right, I'm gonna invite the agent back. I'd like to provide her an opportunity to respond to some of the matters that were raised by the three neighbors.
Okay, there are many items that I should respond to, so I go very quickly. For clarification, the required front setback is the average of both neighbors. The minimum, minimum required is six meter. So we are, what we are proposing is way beyond the minimum required. The average of both neighbors is nine point eighty-eight and we have provided a shadow study to compare the proposed versus the allowed. And if you go to the page five, you can see those shadows overlap together to, that compares, unfortunately, it's not in color. I hope the next page, please. No, I don't know if you have it.
There they are.
Yes. As you see, the proposed is shown in red and the as of right is in blue. So what we are proposing in some areas is even less than as of right. And what I want to mention, it's a common mistake between the neighboring communities because they compare the proposed versus the existing. But the correct comparison is the proposed and the allowed one. So what we are proposing, if I wanted to do an addition renovation project, I could keep the same existing setback, which is twenty-five feet, and we are proposing exactly the same. So in response to the east neighbor, if I do, if I have a bungalow and I want to do an addition, I can keep the existing line and we are basically improving the west side setback. We are keeping the front setback, just as if it was an addition renovation. And there are not many new developments in the neighborhood, but let's say in five, ten years from now, if the east neighbor wants to develop his property, then the average neighbor on both sides is exactly the same, which is twenty-five feet, and he can push the building toward front because probably he would want a bigger home in compared to the existing bungalow that second story is added on top. And this way, we, we are in, in future, we are moving toward the straight, a street escape instead of a zigzag street escape, just homes in different established line. And the planning department was in support of even the previous application. They are in full support of this new one, which is a very modest. And on the previous application, because one of the neighbors mentioned that the main issues of the previous application is not addressed, that's not correct, because if you refer to the minutes of the previous hearing, you, Mr. Chair, personally mentioned that although, even despite the councilor's note, you don't have any problem with the front setback as it's aligned with the majority of the homes. And the main issue was numerous variances related to the, to the front, which we have removed four of them, improved the existing one. And also the other main issue was the hard surface of the whole structure. In order to improve that, we are proposing permeable surface for the driveway. We have changed the deck to wood deck instead of concrete and we are, we got the clue and direction from the committee panel on the previous hearing to know what path we should take. And this application has been reviewed, the previous one was reviewed by a zoning examiner. And in order to save time, since we knew what exactly we were doing, we, we didn't go through the review process again and we came back with this, with these improvements.
I'm just gonna have to ask you to wrap there, because we're.
Yes. And one last thing, I would say, for the previous application, no matter what we are proposing, how modest or aggressive it is, the same number of neighbors attend and write letters, doesn't matter, I would say this is just an anti-development approach from the neighborhood. What we are proposing is really fits the size of the lot. We are using the front, having a narrower mass at the rear. We don't have any length, depth.
I'm gonna have to wrap you there.
Wall height, any variance for the building envelope.
All right, we have, I have some questions just to further this discussion. I heard that the, one of the residents brought up that this is, there's, there's a concern with the fact that there's a variance for a driveway width, which would facilitate a three-car garage, which is out of character with the, the street. Could you provide a little bit of planning rationale for that? Are there any examples of, of similar width driveways? And the second question that I have is, going back to this front yard setback, we're focusing in a lot on the sort of immediate neighbors on both sides. I'm trying to understand this sort of, the relationship between, we've got the existing built form when the neighborhood is built versus the newer developments and they're coming in. And the question that I have within the immediate context, where are these, where these newer developments are coming in? What type of setbacks are setting that datum line for the newer development? So I, I heard at a nearby property, number forty-five, which is a new build, I heard a setback at around nine point five meters, if that's correct?
Yeah.
So in this case, I'm trying to, do you understand where I'm coming from? So you could provide some planning rationale there?
Yes.
And how this might correspond with that? Because we just had a new, and it's a similar terms of massing, it's in terms, in relationship to the street. How does it affect that datum line, that setback? Uh how does it affect that datum line, that setback?
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh as you know, uh the front setback is uh really depends on the configuration of the not just the uh subject property, but the neighboring uh properties. So it varies between uh cases. For example, uh if I uh instead of forty-nine, my client owned forty-seven, the same setback was as of right. Okay, so uh you you cannot really compare what other developments are doing because depending on the lot and the situation of the neighboring properties, it varies uh the the required number is different. So the deviation is uh cannot be judged. For example, sometimes I maybe my required uh setback is like seven point five and I'm already in compliance. Then here, because the uh east neighbor is stepping back for a uh very uh far distance, the required is this exaggerated. And for your information, our uh neighboring uh our neighbor at forty-seven has no objection to this uh application.
Yeah.
The the one that was uh that uh who uh talked about his concern is forty-five, which is one uh one more to the uh west. And that one is not a new build, it's an addition renovation. As I mentioned, if even we do a addition renovation, we can keep the existing and for that.
But you're not, right? You're 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 building a new house, right?
We are building a new house, but nothing about this new house, two-story uh uh lot coverage, length, depths, almost even setback, except that eight inches, nothing is a variance, the height, wall height, everything is in compliance.
All right.
So I would uh be able to do the same. And uh on the forty-five, uh if you look at this uh map, the lot depth is also much deeper because it's at the curve and for the lot depth for the forty-five and forty-three is much deeper. And it's a very uh unique configuration of the properties. Uh we are basically having a as-of-right building envelope just pushed forward. And uh hmm you can imagine for a property with only one hundred feet depth, we are uh leaving twenty-five feet, uh twenty-five percent of the lot depth for the front yard, more than uh twenty-eight percent for the rear yard. And we are building like half of the uh depth in the middle. And even for that portion, we are having a narrower uh mass at the rear. We are uh trying to use the limited size of the property, which is decent at the front, but short at the in the depth.
I think I got a good grasp of it, I'm uh I I I'm good now, thank you. Um any questions? Yes, Mr. Niffel.
Um thank you, I have the same question that the chairman had. The three-car garage that you propose looks to be completely out of character with the area. And it generates a variance about driveway width, which I personally can't support at this point. Um can you give me some more information? It just it appears it appears to be completely out of step with this neighborhood.
Uh huh, uh yes, I can say uh having three-car garage for sixty-footer lots in new developments is a very common approach and uh it's a very usual variance in the applications. Uh in this neighborhood, there are not many new developments. There are many addition renovations, but not new developments. What we are doing is a new development and uh the I want to refer to the planning's uh planning department's approach on this variance uh and uh transportation's approach. Uh whenever we propose a three-car garage in order to minimize the negative impact, we don't have any open landscape or soft landscape variance. So uh instead of that extra portion, that's a uh triangle portion, I could have a hard surface and uh ke- just keep the straight driveway. And uh other approach that we take is always narrow the driveway at the uh public uh uh s- uh portion and have a narrower curb cut, which is in compliance. It's less than six meter at the front, so it only widens up inside the property, which could be a hard landscaping without a variance for the driveway width. Uh and the transportation has no objection to this, the planning has no objection, and it's very common in new developments. I understand in the existing bungalows, even this uh existing house, when the house is just that small, that's a uh purple uh hatch shows the existing house. Uh of course, it doesn't have a even one-car garage, let alone a three-car.
Do you have any addresses to support uh new developments that have this?
Uh I know one recently was uh approved, uh seven Langbourn uh in the same neighborhood, uh just like two, three weeks ago, I believe.
Broader context or immediate?
Yes, and uh it's it's the same zoning designation, it's the same neighborhood.
Same neighborhood, okay. Does that provide some help, Mr. Niffel? Yeah, okay, I have one more question. I I realize there's a lot of questions here, but you know, um.
Yeah, I understand, uh, Mr. Chair, uh uh we you see us here uh on a weekly basis.
Yeah.
We have many, we have many, the the front setback is our main variance.
Well, I haven't asked my question yet before you get going. I know you're eager to respond. Okay, uh I really, I I have a specific question about the uh the height pedestrian entrance. This is a usually easy variance for us to judge because we look at the street. We look at the houses, we look at the height of the door, relationship to the ground. I look at the general street, it seems even in the new developments, this there's no variance. Like it's under the one point two meters and it's it's usually easy to tell based on the number of steps.
Yeah.
How do I rectify? How do I justify uh you know, supporting that variance for pedestrian height uh when not only the existing, but also the newer uh homes I see in the immediate context are under uh or within what the bylaw requires?
Uh this height is uh we don't have any total height or wall height. This is just for the entrance.
You do on the pedestrian, right?
Yeah, yes, I understand.
And the height of that door to the street.
Yes, uh this is just for the entrance and the foyer. The rest of the house uh is tied on top of the garage, whatever the level of the driveway is. So uh uh having this variance just uh reduces the number of steps inside rather than outside. And uh to to remove the variance for the porch height, because on the previous application, even the porch was high.
Yeah.
Now the porch is in compliance, so what you see from the street, the porch height is in compliance, less than one point two meter. Only the door has a step at the door. So uh and it's very minor, uh just uh but that minor thing adds a lot to the comfort of the residence inside because to remove that one more step, I should add another step inside. But the porch is in compliance, it's just the door. And uh hmm it's very uh uh.
Okay.
Since the porch and door is uh in the middle of the building, it doesn't really have any negative impact on the neighbors. Uh if you uh.
No, that that that's helpful, I.
Thank you.
Uh any further questions? None, all right, so it's checking. Okay, uh thank you very much, everybody, uh we've we've heard quite a bit on this uh item. Uh I'd like to take this into committee now for a brief discussion for my colleagues, followed by decision. Uh thank you, you can uh step down.
Thank you.
Anybody like to get us started? Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um I appreciate the concerns with coverage, but as you indicated to the uh to the objectives, we don't have a variance for uh for coverage and therefore I'm I'm not going to speak to that. I do, however, uh picking up on the I the last gentleman that spoke about the um fact that this is in the first planned community in the country. Um it seems to me that there is a certain consistency in this community and three-car garages and wide driveways, in my view, are not part of that um overall fabric. I have um I have some very, very serious reservations about the proposal to widen a driveway and to put three cars uh three-car garages in. There isn't a variance for a three-car garage, but there is for the driveway, so I will not be supporting the variance related to driveway width.
I'll I'll add my quick comments for what they're worth. Listen, I I tend to agree that the three-car driveway in the wider uh sorry, the three-car garage in the wider driveway is not really consistent with what's in the neighborhood. Mind you, there is, there's no variance for three or four, ten or two-car garages, right? That I suppose that that portion is um up to the the homeowner and the applicant. Um I understand the applicant's argument that the the throat width at the street is six and then it flares out and they don't have any variances for hardscape or landscape or anything like that. So no, if that was, you know, if it was a two-car garage, they could have the same, essentially same coverage in that area and it may not be the same level of concern, right? So when I kind of look at it, the technicalities and the math and and study the site plan, I I understand the logic around it. Um that being said, when I look at the streetscape, there's nothing else like it on the streetscape and it's not consistent with the prevailing pattern in the neighborhood. So I'm generally in agreement with that. Um with so in in terms of the the more contentious ones with respect to the setback, I think the setback is generally consistent with the neighborhood. I I studied the setbacks and they jet in and out here and there. And when you're looking at the average setback, you're a bit of a victim of your neighbors, depending on where they sit uh as well. So I'm more sympathetic towards that one. So some of these items are are marginal, kind of in a little bit of a gray zone for me, but uh I'll leave my comments there for the rest of my colleagues and then see what the decision is.
Ms. Sankar.
Yeah, I just uh I I tend to agree with my colleagues in terms of just looking at this application and hearing what the um you know, the agent has had to say. I'm generally in agreement with it based on what was uh indicated. Um however, again, there is that concern around uh the driveway and three-car garage. Um so I I think I would be supportive as well, minus that variance.
Mr. Fazelli, we we okay, all right? Yeah, I I'll be honest, it's a tough one for me. I think this is a really, they've, I mean, this is an application that has underwent some modification. They've they've been afforded the benefit of feedback. Uh so I mean, as these applicant applications that, you know, applications that were refused, as they come closer and closer to compliance, it makes our job more difficult because you're trying to figure out where that line is. Um I I I I yeah, I I I'm in agreement with uh kind of what's been raised. I I I had a bit of concern with that front yard setback just because those, both the neighbors' properties are a bit of anomalies. Uh so I was more looking towards where that datum line was and if those newer developments that are within the immediate context are already establishing a datum line. But I I I think that it's within the my comfort zone uh to support. Um anybody have a motion to be willing to put forward, see where it goes? Mr. Niffel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to move approval of variances one, two, three, and four, and refusal of variance number five. Um I'd also like to include um for the condition of metro links to be included and forestry conditions number one and two. I think with those changes, with the the removal of um variance number five, this actually um meets the character of the neighborhood and I think it's consistent with uh with what's around it and I'm comfortable with it. But uh I would uh I really, really could not support number five, which is the driveway width.
Fair enough. Do I have a second or for that motion? Mr. Bartolo, all in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Staff, uh that application has been approved in part with condition.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item number three is eighty Rayner Road, the purpose.
Mr. Chair, we have a defer, we have the gentleman back for a deferral. Do I do that first?
All right, it would be generous. Which item number?
Uh six.
Six, okay, let's deal with that. All right, uh so I could just stand down, item number three, uh just for a very brief moment. We're gonna jump to item number six, twenty-seven Cortland Avenue. The purpose of the application is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a two-story rear addition with a basement walk-up and new deck. Variances for FSI and sideyard setback, on file material from the applicant, a letter from the TTC. Do we have our agent with us?
Hi, good morning, Mr. Chair and committee members, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, your name and uh address for the record, sir.
Yeah, I'm Kuta Kim and address is twenty-three forty-seven Kennedy Road in Scarborough.
All right, sir, and you're requesting a deferral today?
Yeah, respectfully, yeah, I would like to make a request for a deferral as uh there is additional variances found, which uh zoning examiner actually uh missed missed by mistake. So I made a request for the joining notice, uh the notification yesterday and I received a new revised joining notice late afternoon, so.
Makes sense.
Yeah, it doesn't require any plan to be revised. But still, yeah, we we gotta let the the in- interested parties know what's happening.
No more explanation needed. I'll take this into committee now, uh members? Oh, I'm sorry. Uh we have a speaker online, all right, thank you, staff. Uh I'll pull us out of committee. Let's uh let's get our second speaker online. The immediate neighbor, I believe, at twenty-nine Cortland.
I I am Pamela Stacy at number twenty-nine.
Welcome.
Thank you, I'm not sure what the variances are. I had a couple of questions pertaining directly to my property. There are two Norway maples on the property line that have verged into my property that I am hoping are both being removed as they are not a protected species. And my other concern would be the percentage of the lot that's being taken over by the proposal, proposed changes.
All right, any issue with the request for deferral at this time?
Nope, I hope it's to my advantage.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay, let's go back to our agent. I'd give him an opportunity to respond only to those uh matters that were brought up by the immediate neighbor.
Uh regarding the Norway maple that she mentioned, like we have no like uh objection or comment from the urban forestry. So probably I gotta dig in more for that one.
Okay.
And then when it comes to the, I think she mentioned, she is talking about the floor space index. Yeah, we are doing just rear addition, second story addition, and then it increased the yeah floor space, so yeah.
All right, Mr. Kim, I if I may make a suggestion uh as part of the deferral request, although it is not required, it may be in your interest to uh engage in further discussion with the immediate neighbor before coming back.
Yeah.
Yeah, see if you can work out uh some of the concerns uh on your own. Okay, thanks uh to both individuals, let's take this into committee. Mr. Bartolo.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh I'll put forward a motion to defer this application to allow the variances to be picked up and circulated as indicated.
All right, seconded by Ms. Sankar, all in favor? That's unanimous, that deferral request is approved. All right, uh going back to item number three. Eighty Rayner Road, the purpose of the application is to construct a new dwelling. Variances for the number of stories, rear balcony area, and main pedestrian height. On file, material from the applicant. Have our agent with us? We have our agent with us, is he online?
Yes, Ali Shakiri, three twenty-six Shepherd Avenue East.
Welcome, Mr. Shakiri. Um all right, Mr. Shakiri, uh I'm gonna jump right to a question. Um I'm just looking at the rear deck on the site plan and I'm I'm just curious whether or not there's been any discussion with the immediate neighbor concerning privacy screening?
Uh no, and um if you wish to impose any condition regarding that, I I respectfully accept. I think that's something that both us and the neighbor would mutually benefit from it.
Okay, uh but you haven't spoken with him yet, so you're not aware whether or not that uh, okay, fair enough. Uh I'm gonna ask my colleagues whether or not they'd like a presentation uh on this item. I'm seeing heads shake, uh Mr. Shakiri, if it's all right with you, take this into committee?
Indeed. Indeed, by all means, thank you.
All right, uh let's take this into committee for decision. Did I see a hand? No, Mr. Bartolo.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Uh, I've reviewed the file. I don't I don't see anything outrageous in it that's uh going to be a huge impediment to the neighborhood or local neighbors. Um, therefore, I will put forward a uh motion to approve this application.
All right, second second by Mr. Fazelli, all in favor? That is unanimous. You have your approval, sir.
Thanks so much.
Uh, no conditions, right, Mr. Bartolo? On that, there's no conditions?
Thanks.
All right, uh item number four, ten forty-four Finch Avenue West. The purpose of the application is to legalize and maintain an existing outdoor space, three variances, east side yard setback, outdoor patio area, and deck projection into a side yard setback, on file material from the applicant, uh as well as some letters and support. Welcome.
Good morning, there are members of the committee. My name is Sergey Plchanov, S E R G E I. The address is two hundred Billings Crest in Newmarket, application number twenty-five one five eight two one five.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask my colleagues whether they require a presentation on this item. I'm seeing head shake. I appreciate you coming down today. If it's all right with you, you could take this into committee for a decision?
Uh, thank you very much.
Yes?
No question.
I take that as a yes?
Yes.
All right. All right, let's take this into committee. Ms. Sankar.
Sure, through you, Mr. Chair, if there's no other comments from my colleagues, I'll be willing to put forward a motion.
All right.
Um, I I've reviewed the application. I do believe it's minor in nature. I do believe it meets the four tests. I think it's also coupled with a a lot of support um from the surrounding community and
Nice to see, yeah.
For all of those reasons, I think they've done their due diligence and um what could have been presented, you know, as as some concern around the setbacks, I think I understand it. And so I'm going to put forward a motion to approve this application uh as is.
All right, second by Mr. Niffel, all in favor? That's unanimous. You have your approval, sir.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
You as well. All right, we dealt with item number six, if I'm not mistaken. Five, thank you. Item number five, sixty-four Tilson Road. Purpose of the application is to construct a cabana in the rear yard. Variance for lot coverage related to an ancillary building and rear yard landscaping, on file material from the applicant, memo from urban forestry. Welcome.
Yes, my name is Oliver Lamaca, the owner, sixty-four Tilson Road, Toronto.
Welcome. Uh, I just get to start it off with a question. Uh, in your submission, you provided a photo of the backyard. Uh, and I do see a pretty mature tree, but I don't see it on the site plan.
Um, it is, um, we have um a preapproval from the forestry.
Yep.
Um, to take it down because an arborist report shows that it's diseased.
Okay.
And um we just recently, last week, received confirmation that if we elect to, we can move uh the replanting to the front yard because we do have space in the front yard.
All right. Uh, and I do see the memo from urban forestry, they've uh put in their standard uh recommendation for condition. Um, yeah, I guess I'll ask my colleagues whether they require a presentation. Mr. Bartolo has a question?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Um, listen, in in principle, the the quarter percent on the coverage.
I'm sorry?
It like in principle, the quarter percent on the coverage is not what I have an issue with. When I look at this, your your landscape uh percentage in the rear yard is gonna go down by a a good amount, right?
Okay.
So on balance, can you demonstrate that the property has excess anywhere else? Like, does your side yard have more landscaping that is required? Does your front yard at a higher percentage? Like, on balance, does the property provide additional landscape uh area?
Yeah, we have a fairly large front yard. Um, and the backyard, I understand that it will encroach a little bit on the soft landscaping.
Right, do you have, do you have any evidence to that fact? Do you have any any numbers or data you can share to?
So I I can, I saw I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Oh, well, let me get a little closer to the microphone then. I said, do you do you have any like numerical evidence of that? Can you can you point to something on the site plan and a calculation or?
Um, I thought it was already on the site plan in terms of the percentage. I believe the application said we might be over five percent, which is a minimum variance.
Am I not following something here?
I didn't follow either.
I'm I'm not following that explanation there, sir. Uh, there's two variances, one for the lot coverage, right? And then there's one for rear yard landscaping.
Yes.
Okay, so I I what I'm asking is, on balance, does the rest of the property exceed the uh landscape coverage anywhere else that's required? So for example, if you needed ten percent in the front yard, can you demonstrate that you have twelve percent, for example?
Um, I don't have that information, unfortunately. Sorry.
Uh, but you can confirm actually the side yard and the front yard are existing and to remain. I do see a driveway with hardscape, but that's that's not part of this application. It's just an existing element on the property. I don't know if that helps, Mr. Bartolo, in that?
It's a mutual driveway. We're not touching that. We're also not touching the front yard.
Mr. Niffel?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you, on the site plan, can you tell me what is illustrated in the rear yard? Uh, what portion of that is existing? Is it all there already, the patio and the?
Yes, it's all there. The patio uh is already there. There's a little bit of gravel driveway um where previous owners used to park, but because the mutual driveway is fairly tight, we don't really park back there. Um, and there is a um a shed currently there that will be turn uh torn down.
And there's a walkway that that sort of connects the training pool to the new, the new building.
Um, yes.
It it's there as well?
No. That walkway is, it is in there. See, that gray area right there to the right, that's the only thing that's there. Everything else is uh grass.
So they'd be adding the accessory in terms of affecting the soft landscaping?
Yeah, that's
Both the accessory and the the patio, I guess, or the walkway connecting the training pool to the cabana?
What what I was trying to determine in in sort of further to my colleague's comment was whether or not you could make up the deficit in landscaping by decreasing the size of the patio and or by, you can't really remove the the walkway along the pool. Um, but I I'm, I share my colleague's concern with the reduction in landscaping. It's a serious issue these days. Um, be because of drainage problems, and I'm looking for ways in which that can be um adjusted or accommodated, and the only way I can think of it is to um to adjust the size of the patio, reduce the size of the patio and turn it into soft landscaping. Uh, what what response would you have to that?
Um, the gray patio or the patio adjacent to the house? Because right now
The the new, the new walkway.
The new walkway, yes, sure. Yes, absolutely.
The new, I I think, I think frankly, the new walkway will be needed because people are gonna be coming out of the pool and slopping around and that's
Correct, correct.
But the patio that's adjacent to the house is the one I'm talking about.
Okay. So how much bigger do, or how much smaller are you proposing?
I would, I would like you, I'd like you to remove the variance for soft landscaping. So I would like you to have the landscaping that the bylaw requires, which would, uh, and I can't tell you what size that would be, but I I I'm just arguing that the variance for a reduction in soft landscaping in this case doesn't make sense to me.
I I might ask too, is there, uh, where's the pool equipment gonna be stored? I don't see any indication on the site plan that accommodates that.
Uh, well, it's it's a training pool, so it's not like a big pool that requires a lot of accessories. So that can easily be stored in the basement in the house or inside the cabana.
Inside, okay, fair enough. Any other questions? I guess I I I my colleagues raised uh concern with uh the soft landscaping for both two of my colleagues. Um, so I I do wanna provide, I you didn't have a formal presentation, but I do wanna provide an opportunity uh for you to make a submission um on that. If you like.
Oh, a presentation?
Uh, it's well, eh, or give you an opportunity to speak to the soft landscaping variance, because it was raised as a as a concern. Um, I I don't get the impression, I I can speak for myself, I don't have a concern with the other variants, but I I think some concern's been raised with the soft landscaping. So I do wanna provide an opportunity for you to
So, okay, so um, I mean, the only thing we can do is obviously reduce the size of the patio, the existing patio. If we can accommodate that, then of course, then we'll be more than happy to do that. Um, we can also, speaking with our neighbor, reduce the size of the the hardscape that's to the right of the um the cabana, because neither neighbor nor I use that space.
I think I would say it does, the driveway does extend beyond the extent of the right of way considerably. Uh, and if I guess, you know, to that point, I'm looking at the site plan. You know, the drive, it really was intended as a a drive that extends beyond the right of way to access a framed shed, which I understand is being removed and replaced with the
That's correct.
So if the 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 point of the ancillary building is not, it's not a garage, it's not intended to house a vehicle, then
That's correct.
Perhaps uh some alteration to the driveway would help bring everything in line without having to alter the
I think that would be best the solution.
I think there's some options in this case, Mr. Niffel. I'm I'm just trying to, that they're reasonable, right?
I I I believe so, and I I don't think it's our our role here to tell you to remove it here and not there. We didn't tell you how to do it. I'm just saying that you're deficient in in soft landscaping. I personally think that the variance relative to that is questionable, so um if that's not approved, then you'd need to make adjustments to increase soft landscaping, and it can be in a number of areas.
Sure.
All right.
Yeah, we'll probably go with the the driveway again because it's not really meant for that use.
Easy.
I think that's what you're gonna say. I really didn't want to touch the patio, to be honest with you.
I think that's
Okay.
Uh, other questions from any of our members? Uh, sir, if it's all right with you, we take this into committee for decision? Okay, thank you. Uh, you can step down. Okay, uh, let's take this into committee now. Uh, Mr. Niffel, I I don't mean to put you on the spot, but maybe you wanna kick us off?
Um, certainly, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm I'm pleased to move approval of of of, just a minute, I'm having trouble here, of variance number one, but refusal of variance number two, and my reasoning is that uh the soft scape is an an important component for retaining um drainage and 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 uh the lack of flooding for neighbors and so forth. Uh, I I believe that this project um can be altered to remove um the um the amount of paving and increase the amount of soft landscaping without damaging any of the um important components of the project. I think with that, it uh supports the the neighborhood, character of the neighborhood, approach to development, and I'd like to move that approval.
Uh, we have forestry number two.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm I missed that. You're uh subject to forestry condition number two, my mistake, sorry.
And I thank the applicant for clarifying the
Yes.
Condition of the tree at the rear.
Yeah.
Uh, do I have a second or for that, Mr. Niffel's motion? All right, uh, Mr. Bartolo, I see, and uh also, uh, all all in favor then? See Ms. Sankar, and that's unanimous. Uh, Mr. Niffel's motion is approved. Uh, that application is approved in part with condition. Thank with eh with condition, forestry, number two. Yeah, let's take a, let's take a relief break. Uh, we'll resume, uh, say ten minutes? To eleven thirty-eight. Oh, yes, a relief break. Thank you, and then we'll we'll finish up the morning items. Oh, yes, a relief break, thank you, and then we'll, we'll finish up the morning items. All right, everybody, it's eleven thirty-nine, we are back. We're on item number seven. Ten, Veronhan Avenue, purpose of the application is to construct a new dwelling with a basement walkout and a cabana in the rear yard. There's a number of variances, uh, including number of platforms on a rear main wall, two variances related to rear balcony areas, lot coverage, stair width, front yard landscaping, side yard setback for an ancillary building, parking space length, east side yard setback, and west side yard setback. On file, I have material, uh, from the applicant, uh, report from community planning, uh, transportation services, urban forestry, uh, as well as a letter, uh, of concern from number thirty-one, uh, Veronham. Uh, and as well as, uh, some form letters, uh, that have been submitted. We have a major applicant with us.
Uh, hi, this is Jim Pfeffer, the applicant from ninety-five Saint Clair Avenue West. Uh, can I just go through these changes that were requested by staff before we get going?
Yes, please, Mr. Pfeffer.
Yeah, so we have gone through this with staff, uh, and agreed on a few changes, uh, and those changes are li- as listed in the staff report. Variance number four, for the proposed lot coverage gets reduced from thirty-six percent to thirty-five point seven four percent. Variance number six, for the proposed front yard landscaping is increased from forty-three point five percent to a minimum of fifty point eight nine percent. Variance number ten, for the proposed east side yard setback is increased from one point three four six meters to a minimum of one point five meters. And variance number seven, for the minimum front yard soft landscaping is eliminated entirely. And with those, uh, changes to the variances, uh, the staff have noted that, you know, some of these things basically relate to the configuration of the lot, so they have asked that the committee apply a condition that, uh, the proposal be substantially, developed substantially in accordance to the site plan that you have, uh, in front of you and attached to the report. And as well, uh, we have talked to the neighbor at, uh, thirty-three Vernum, uh, immediately to the east, and, uh, they've asked that, uh, we put a condition, or, or, or we've told them that we'd be happy to accept a condition that there be a privacy screen on the side of the balcony facing their property, a- and of course, if the committee wants to, uh, add such a condition, you know, we're more than happy to accept it.
That's adjacent to forty.
Uh, adjacent to thirty-three Vernum, uh, Vernum Preston, I believe it is, or Vernum, uh, that's on the east side, and that's adjacent to Vernum Court, we're on Vernum Avenue, so that's thirty-three Vernum Court.
All right. Uh, can we just pull up, uh, just for clarification, pull up one of the side elevations, uh, just so we can show the.
That it, the east side is probably the best one here.
Correct.
Yeah, so this is the east side elevation. Um, you can see there's two high windows into the garage, a door to the garage, second story windows, two of which are into washrooms, one of which is into a closet, and then at the ground floor, on the right-hand side, there's two windows into the living room, and then kind of further away, as you'd see in the site plan, that breakfast area, and it's where that breakfast area is in the site plan, that there's a balcony above, so it's actually pretty far back from this property line where we'd have that trans-, uh, privacy screen.
That's on the second level?
It is on the second level.
All right. Any questions? Uh, Mr. Pfeffer, I, just a little bit of concern, uh, maybe you can give me just a little bit of, uh, more information about the side yard setbacks. Um, I understand it's, it's a variance for reduced, uh, side yard setbacks, I, I, I just, I, I also see sort of with what's left, the inclusion of, uh, some window wells there. Um, i- i- at what point, you know, does it become accessibility issues, uh, from the front to the back of the property? It's, what's the intention, uh, here, is still enough room, uh, for example, to, you know, um, walk comfortably from the front to the.
Oh, yeah, so it, I mean, if you take a look at the site plan, I mean, I don't know if you want me to kind of walk through a whole presentation, but if you take a look at the site plan, so the set, the side yard setbacks at the front and the rear of the dwelling are both one point eight meters. So there's one point five meters we're looking at, on the east side is that kind of pinch point you can see. You can see the lot tapers a little bit, and then there's that one kind of little corner that sticks out there. That's where it becomes one point eight meters. But you can see, we actually, we leave a green strip between the walkway and the property line. Uh, there is a window well there which can have a grate over it, so, you know, you can, uh, access the, the side yard over it. So there's still, you know, plenty of space for, I think, construction clearance, for access, and for creating a sense of openness between the buildings. For example, if you look at nine Vernum Court directly across the street, that's another house which is a, you know, beautiful specimen in this street, and it has one point eight si- meter side yards on, on both sides. Um, so, and here, you know, a minimum at that pinch point of one point five is still, you know, a lot of space to get around this, this house.
All right, okay, thank you. Other questions? All, yes, Mr. Niffel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Pfeffer, could, could we go back to the east elevation for just a second?
Sure.
Um, just to clarify, in case, I think somebody's going to speak to the application, um, on the, where the balcony is, you don't have a balcony railing, which is why it doesn't show as a balcony in this elevation, right?
Yeah, that, that's an oversight, you'd see that on the second floor plan.
So, it's where the, the two, um, pane windows are below, and there's two columns, and then there's two, um, windows, and it's above that. And that's the balcony, and that's the area that you're proposing to put a privacy screen.
That's absolutely correct.
Okay.
You know, i- if, if there is gonna be someone speaking to this, you know, I, I would like that we've prepared a presentation, if I could get a chance to maybe make that, and I can, you know, address to all the variances we're seeking. I think that might be helpful here. Uh, and we do have, uh, we submitted a, a kind of a presentation booklet.
Yeah, Mr. Pfeffer, we do have another speaker, uh, just to confirm in person, so I, I do, uh, for procedural, uh, to just ensure that we're not veering from procedure, I, I do want to provide you that opportunity, uh, for presentation. Um, just be mindful, we've covered quite a bit, I think, through our questioning, but, uh, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna stop you short, uh, should you feel that you need the time.
Oh, yeah, well, I, I'd like to speak to this, so, uh, you can start the clock.
All right, thank you.
So, taking a look at this front of elevation, I mean, I think I'd like to remind you that, um, with the changes we've made, staff are in support of this application, and the owner has circulated pretty widely in the neighborhood with the builder, and talked to a lot of different neighbors, and, and found some letters of support, as you've also noted. There's no height variance required for this building, and, as we discussed, there's those one point eight meter side yard setbacks on both sides, which is common in the neighborhood, including immediately across the street. Uh, you can see we have a two-car garage door, even though we have a three-car garage. So there's a tandem space behind that two-car garage door. Uh, we need a variance for the length of that space, transportation services has no concern with that variance, and we think what that does is it makes it, you know, sort of less impact for the garage on the street. We have that circular driveway, which is a prevalent feature in the neighborhood. There's no soft yard landscaping variance required for that now, there is a small landscape variance, but again, that's kind of a prevalent feature. Going forward to the site, the colored site plan below, I'm just gonna speak to a couple of things. Number one, in that site plan, you can see in the top right-hand corner, there's the tree that urban forestry expressed a concern about, and we've reduced the driveway, so none of the driveway touches the tree protection zone of that tree, so we've addressed the concerns of urban forestry. And we intend to preserve the other private trees or boundary trees on the other properties. In the bottom left-hand corner, you'll see the cabana. Now, we do have a side yard setback to the cabana there, but that cabana is adjacent to the neighbor's garage, I can show you a photo of that. And I'd like to point out that that cabana accounts for two point nine five, almost three percent of the lot coverage we're seeking. So, without that, the lot coverage of the house is thirty-two point eight percent, so really, you know, very much in keeping with the prevalent character of the area. I'd also point out that that cabana just has two small enclosed areas with a breezeway in between and a kind of a projecting roof, and that three percent is on the roof area, so the actual kind of enclosed area of that cabana is a lot less, so I think that puts our requested lot coverage into perspective. Uh, on the next page, I mentioned, um, circular driveways are prevalent. All of those purple dots represent circular driveways. The arrows indicate the kind of narrower side yard setbacks you can see on this city plan. Uh, other coverage variances, if you go to the next page, we list coverage variances which you see in this neighborhood, which are requested for al- almost every property that goes to committee. What we're seeking is not an outlier at all, particularly when you take into account, uh, the fact that a lot of it is just for the roof of the cabana. Side yard setbacks in the range of what we're seeking, also extremely common. Neighboring context, on the next page, we've taken the time to show a number of these houses with three-car garages, which I think you spent a certain amount of time on this morning. We're not having a three-car garage, we've got it in two with a tandem space, um, so we've taken the steps to mitigate the appearance of the garage in the streetscape. Uh, the next page, I think I mentioned the, the character of the neighborhood, is the size of the houses that you'll see, and how we're kind of in keeping with this neighborhood character. And then on the next page, just a couple of photos of these kind of narrower side yard setbacks, which aren't atypical, including that, uh, top right-hand or left-hand corner, that's nine Vernum Court, one point eight on both sides, and that's directly across the street. So, um, yeah, I, I think, uh, unless you have any questions about what I've just presented, I'm happy to leave it there and hear the, uh, neighbor.
All right, uh, thank you, Mr. Pfeffer. Um, was there any, uh, thing, uh, any consideration in, uh, planning? Uh, I, I'm just trying to understand a little bit, there's a bit of a unique adjacency to one of the immediate neighbors, uh, number thirty-three. Um, and the, I guess what's unique about it is that. And the, I guess what's unique about it is that, based on the figure ground plan, my understanding is that you have a rear yard abutting a side yard condition. Is that fair to say?
Well, so if you go down to the next page in the presentation, we, there's some photos of that yard. So that yard of 33 Vernum Court is, I think, you know, properly called a side yard, just because, unless I'm very much mistaken, the house is kind of oriented. So, so it's front, the, the, from a zoning perspective, the front is the same street as ours. But you can see they have a kind of a green strip there, and they do have a sitting area there. So one thing, you know, I think I'd like to point out is there's that big tree that you can see on the, the left-hand photos. So, you know, that tree is creating a kind of a enclosure and shading of that sitting area. You know, what we're proposing, I don't think is actually going to be very different from that. In the bottom right-hand corner, you can see there's a kind of a substantial cedar hedge. And so this talks to the difference it's going to be in effect when we build this house. So bottom right-hand corner, where that cedar hedge is now, kind of enclosing that side yard, our, our new house is going to extend along where that cedar hedge is. So the enclosure of that side yard is going to change from cedar hedge to the sidewall of our house. On the more left-hand side of that bottom right image, you'll see that, you know, pretty big tree. That tree is going to be preserved, you know, there's a, and I think we've, I've talked about this with the arborist. Of course, we're going to go through urban forestry. There is an urban forestry condition on this application. But I don't think that what we're doing is going to have any real significant effects on this side yard. And also, we took a look at the east elevation, and, and one thing, you know, we've offered that neighbor to the east that we, you know, signed some sort of undertaking to have window treatment on, on the windows facing east. But those windows are on the second floor, as I said, you know, bathroom, bathroom closets. And on the ground floor, garage, and then those kind of tiny corner windows into the, into the living room, and which will have window treatment. So I don't see us having a lot of impact on this, what I think is a side yard, but obviously has a kind of a, an amenity space in it.
All right. Okay. Thank you. Other questions at this time? All right. Thank you, Mr. Pfeffer. We have another speaker here. Mr. Helfend?
Yes. That's right, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Mr. Chair, the name is Matthew Helfend. Address is 181 Bay Street. I'm going to be referring to just a couple of items that are in the applicant's presentation. I represent Mr. George Chalakis, who's the owner of this, you could keep that up right there, actually, of 33 Vernum Court, which is the adjacent property. As you pointed out, Mr. Chair, this is a side yard to rear yard condition. I'll just respond to that quickly. This is not a side yard either in function or in law. This is a rear yard. The reason how you know that it functions as a rear yard is because you see the amenity space right there. You also see the primary rear windows. So those are windows to a kitchen. And a little bit farther back, that's windows to a bedroom. And so we're objecting to variance 10. We're only objecting to the side yard setback variance on the east side. Don't have an issue with this infill project. Generally, we recognize intensification. Reinvestment is important. But this side yard setback is completely inappropriate. What you can see from this image, and if you recall the site plan, this building is going to be very close to this rear yard. There's going to be nine windows that are looking across and down into this rear yard and rear windows. And what's also important to note is that there's a bit of a grade difference in that my client's property is, sits a little bit lower. So if you, I did the rough calculations as I was sitting here, we could put a fence up to 6.6 feet. That's, by law, that's the maximum we can put up. That wouldn't even block off most of the windows. So any privacy mitigation that exists right now, those cedar hedges, those are going to be gone. You heard from the applicant, he said the condition is going to change from a cedar privacy hedge to a wall with windows, and that's going to be the same? I, I just completely disagree with that. I don't think that that's the same at all. That's a significant privacy impact. The intent and purpose of the bylaw. Ordinarily, in an RD zone, which is what we have here, the setback from a rear, to a rear lot line, so the rear of a building to a rear lot line, 7.5 meters, or 1, 25% of the lot. The purpose of that is to recognize that rear yards are sensitive areas, and buildings need to be set back a reasonable distance. There needs to be some separation. You don't get that 7.5 meter setback when you have a side to rear condition. We recognize that. We're going to be dealing with a side lot line. But that doesn't mean the intent should be thrown out. And this committee should be very mindful of when you're approving this sort of side setback variance, and we think it's totally inappropriate. The, the privacy impacts and overlook, we think, are actually quite obvious, just from the proximity. I'd note as well that, and you pointed this out, Mr. Chair, there's not going to be a lot of space, not a lot of space to walk. Also, not a lot of space for mechanical. So there could be an air conditioner there. There could be a downspout there. And given, you know, the fact that there are no soft landscaping variances being sought, but they're right on the cusp. And so we do have some concerns about runoff. I know that's going to be dealt with through buildings, but I think it's legitimate because there's not a lot of flexibility there when you go that narrow. So we're asking for it to go as of right. Privacy, runoff, those are the two concerns. But a third one, and I'd like you to go to the site plan, please, the colored site plan. This has to do with the tree at the rear of the property. The tree at the rear of the property is an 88-centimeter healthy corkscrew willow tree. It's that one at the top left, at the top of the pool. That's a boundary tree. It sits on the property line of both the property owners, which means that it actually belongs to both property owners. When that happens, under the Forestry Act, it is an offense to injure a tree, that's a boundary tree, without the consent of the neighbors. And my clients are right here. They don't consent to that injury. So approving this building, this setback, and I, if you could zoom in maybe, I don't know if you can see it. The, the building itself is actually in the tree protection zone. There's a corner of the building in the TPZ, plus there's going to be a one meter or so overbuild into the TPZ. The applicant recognizes that they're going to injure this tree because they've asked for an injury permit. So that is against the law. If the committee approves this side yard setback variance, it is effectively approving a condition that the only way the applicant can build this thing is to commit a provincial offense. And that's not minor or desirable, and it could be totally addressed by moving back to the as-of-right setback. Mr. Chair, the applicant bears the onus of proving that each and every one of these variances meet the four tests. It is up to them. It is not a right to have a variance. There is no justification that's been provided. I don't think the justification you heard is, was very good. The idea of a cedar hedge being replaced with a building with windows, I don't think is a good answer at all. There's not, also nothing unusual about this lot. I, I think I heard the applicant say that planning maybe said there was some unusual lot condition. This is a basically rectangular lot. It is not unusual at all. There's nothing about this building design itself either that is unusual that would require this setback, other than to capture a little bit of extra side yard GFA at the expense of my client. I don't think that's appropriate.
Final words?
Final words. I think this should be refused. We're requesting, we support the position of a, of a privacy screen. The windows are inappropriate, and, and I would actually ask the committee to consider, even at the 2.4 meters, at the as-of-right, there would still be impacts. And I think that a condition for frosted glass there would actually also be appropriate, in addition to maintaining the as-of-right. So don't have any objection to the rest of the house. The integrity of the building could be maintained, still a really big house, by maintaining the as-of-right setback. It's what, 6,600 square feet? Maintaining that setback, I think, would be appropriate. Thank you. I've gone over my time. My apologies.
All right. No, thank you very much. Questions? Just clarifying question very quickly. Can we just confirm what the setback is from the side slash rear property line to the second-story balcony with the privacy screen?
Oh, you know, I'd have to, the applicant would have to answer that.
I see it on there. It was staff. I don't know if we can zoom in. Just want to ensure that we're... 7.54? 3, 4 seems about right, about 20 feet. So, okay. And it just, am I missing something? There's, there's still some sightlines that are of concern, even with the large tree there from the second-story balcony?
Well, we think that the privacy screen would be appropriate to put in. The sightline, I mean, keep in mind, this is a boundary tree. Most of it is on our client's property, so that means that they're relying on our maintenance of this tree that they're proposing to injure. So I do think there's some sightline concerns. All those hedges are going to be on. Yeah, there's certainly going to be a sightline concern.
Okay.
No question.
Fair enough. Okay. All right. No further questions. Let's go back to Mr. Pfeffer. I want to provide him an opportunity to respond to Mr. Helfend.
Yeah. Thank you very much. So a couple of things. I mean, I, the first, acknowledge that there is a difference between having a wall and having a hedge. But the fact is that, you know, we're, we aren't asking for a length variance. And if that sidewall of this house were, you know, a couple of feet further away, you know, I think that hedge, just taking a look at it, would probably not be there. And the condition would still be essentially the same. In terms of these windows, as I've pointed out, those windows on the second floor are into an en suite bathroom, an en suite bathroom, and into a closet. And we made, we've told the, the neighbor that we'd be happy to sign some sort of undertaking to the effect that there'd be a window treatment for those windows. On the ground floor, the windows are into a garage. There's a door to the garage. And there's those two small windows which are in a corner of the living room. So they're not in a place where people are going to be standing and looking out there to let, you know, sort of light in. I think Mr. Helfend said that that is a rear yard. And, you know, it, it's not, it's not a rear yard from a zoning perspective because the setback that that neighbor enjoys there on their property is 4.9 meters. So as Mr. Helfend rightly points out, typically you need seven and a half meters if that was actually going to be a rear yard. And under the old North York zoning bylaw, the front, the, the front lot line was the shortest lot line abutting a street. So under the old zoning bylaw, and in practice, it's really a very wide side yard, which in fact creates a generous space between these two buildings. And to the north of 33 Vernum, there is in fact another sort of big open yard to the north of that building. And you can see that on an aerial photograph if you want. I think that tree, you know, of course, we're happy to accept that forestry condition. Forestry isn't going to permit anything that will cause a significant injury to that tree. So yes, there's going to be a change to that side yard condition, but it's not really a change that's any different from what the bylaw would essentially allow. In that there would be, you know, it's a changed tool wall from a hedge. Enclosure is going to be the same. The shadow is going to be the same. There's going to be a different feel, but it's nothing different from what the bylaw is contemplating. Now, happy to accept the privacy screening condition. You know, if you want to scroll on this to see the aerial photo that, that shows the yard to the north of 33 Vernum, you know, you can. But, you know, I'm happy to take any questions. But that's, that's, I think, what I would say in response to Mr. Hefland.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Pfeffer. Questions? Miss Sankar, just to confirm your videos off, in case you're... Ah, oh, she's good. She's with us. She's good. All right. No questions? All right, guys. Let's take this into committee.
I did want to say something about the fact that there was another, some, someone who had complained, and that was Daniel Mack or something from number 31, and that was around the stormwater. But I'm presuming that a lot of the changes that were made in recognition of the staff report might address those concerns. Just to, to let you know, I feel very strongly about what the last speaker has indicated. I do know that with respect to that tree, it would go under, you know, urban forestry conditions, which we can subject, you know, any sort of approvals to, so that they can't move forward until urban forestry approves that. But there were some strong points in around the setbacks itself. I'm, I'm concerned. So I just wanted to share that.
Sure. I think there's been, you know, I think both sides have put forth some planning rationale. They're obviously in dispute what they would consider a side yard versus a rear yard. I think in terms of function, in principle, we're really looking at a rear yard. And the reason I say that is, you know, there's indications for me, looking at the orientation of the massing, where the front door is, where the driveway is. And to the second speaker's submission, you know, where primary windows are located on the building. I'm sure if we looked at a floor plan of the adjacent or the immediate neighbor's property, you'd probably see those primary windows on the ground level. Probably go to a kitchen or a living room or some other primary room on the ground level. I don't, I, I think the alternative, in trying to understand where Mr. Pfeffer's coming from, if not a rear yard and it's a side yard, then the question is, what would be considered the rear yard? And what you're left with is that small patch of land on the side of the garage where there's no windows. And they, to me, that's, that's a hard, you know, to sort of think and expect the adjacent property owner to utilize that space, call that a rear yard. I, that, that's a bit of a stretch for me. So I, I do, I, I did actually, and you can see in my questioning earlier, I did have some initial concern with the adjacency. It's just... I, I mean, the adjacency is what it is, you know, you're adjacent. Certain lots or certain neighbors are more sensitive to development than others. And I think as, you know, in, in looking at the four tests, part of that is also, you know, responding to your context with what you're proposing. So I think while I'm supportive of all of the variances, I do share the immediate neighbor's concern with respect to variance number 10, I think it was, if I'm not mistaken. But I think the setback on the other side is supportable, given the adjacency. Oh, just to add since speaking, on the note of privacy with respect to the windows, I side with Mr. Pfeffer on this point. I mean, there, they really are secondary windows, support bathrooms, and kind of secondary spaces in the home. I'm not sure I'm comfortable sort of imposing kind of frosted conditions that would essentially limit any sightlines from the side. But I do share in some of the, the overlook concerns. Less so with the terrace, just because the setback is so, you've got 20 feet or so a setback. It's a very small balcony, and it's only accessed by a primary bedroom on the second floor. So kind of where I'm at with this. Yes, Mr. Niffel?
Mr. Chairman, the only comment I would make is the east side setback is, it seems to me it's the only reasonable way that you can go from the front yard to the backyard. Because if you look at the west side setback, there are window wells there. And so you can't push a lawnmower over those or move garbage cans and so forth. So although it's a larger side yard, it's an obstructed side yard. The one on the east at least is not obstructed. It's a, it's a, a flat space that you can, you can wheel garbage cans and, and other equipment on. I, it's small, but I don't think it's impractical in this particular case. I do think the concern for the, the second-floor balcony overlook is a problem. And although the, the application talks about there being two balconies, if you look at the plans in detail, it's basically one L-shaped balcony. There's one balcony along the, I think it's the daughter's bedroom, which is quite narrow, but it connects to the larger balcony, which is the one that could potentially overlook the eastern neighbor's property. And that, as has been discussed, that balcony would have a, a privacy screen along the east boundary. I think that's a reasonable approach in this case to over, to address the overlook problem which was raised earlier. I, I, other than that, I don't really have a lot of any other difficulties with this application. I think it's, it's reasonable. I think it's been well thought out. And in terms of whether the property the east is a side yard or a rear yard, as Mr. Pfeffer has indicated, legally it's a side yard. And I think that we need to be cognizant of the fact that, that some privacy needs to be provided for that space.
Is there anything specific that, when you say... Is there anything specific that, when you say legally it's a side yard, or Mr. Pfeffer's submission, are we speaking, talking specifically about the subject property or the neighbor? What, and what it, what evidence do we have before us to indicate that that is legally considered a side yard versus a rear yard? Because I'm, I'm having trouble, we've, we've got two parties both saying essentially completely opposite things with respect to whether or not it's a rear or a side yard? Like legally, from a legal standpoint?
My understanding was, is that in that case, the rear yard is at the, the back, if you will, of the house. The front yard is at the front of the house, and the two other yards are side yards. And that's my understanding of... And whether it is a rear yard or a side yard, I, well, like, I, I do see the point that if it, if it's used primarily as an amenity space, it needs greater degree of privacy than if it were basically a side yard which provides access. But my understanding is that it's a, that is legally a side yard. I'm not a lawyer, so I'm not going to argue that.
Yeah. I think that's where, that's where I'm struggling. I, I, I'm not sure that I, there's not any legal indication to sort of... It, it'd be hard to expect that neighbor to, I don't know, call that a side yard just based on the orientation of the property and the windows and the... And then, I guess, from a legal standpoint... Yeah, is the expectation then that if we call the rear yard what's behind the garage, is the expectation that that's where their primary activity should be situated? Like, are they?
I, I gather the, the issue is not whether it is a rear or a side yard, so much as is it the primary amenity space for the house? My understanding of the lawyer's submission, and I understand it, is that based on the photographs indicated, that that is a primary amenity space for the house and functioned as one would normally expect a rear yard to function.
Yes, yeah, that I, that I accept. Okay, other comments? If not, maybe we're ready for a motion. See where it goes, board of our members? Mr. Bartolo?
Sure, I can, I can have some comments there, Mr. Chair. I mean, listen, on, on balance, I think there's some, there's merits to the application. They've worked with the planning department to achieve the standards that planning has asked them to on various items, so I'm, I'm happy about that. Obviously, that's a positive item, and the elimination of variance number seven for the landscaping is also a positive item. I think on balance, it's generally supportable, that side yard setback. When you look at the type and volume of all the variances, it's, like, the building envelope is essentially being, it's, it's over the maximum, right? It's an overbuild for what's permitted on the lot, right? And that's causing some friction with the neighbor, and it's causing some requirements for some setbacks and, or some variances in other areas. So, while I think many portions of it have merit and can be supported, especially with the modifications here, the neighbor's agent makes, makes some valid arguments, I think, in my opinion, would lead to the, you know, the refusal of variance number 10, and the approval of the other ones as modified, in my opinion. I think it's a, a reasonable kind of middle ground position that addresses the concerns of both the neighbor and the planning department, and allows the applicant to build, you know, a, a very large home on the lot regardless of that.
Right. A motion, maybe? See where it goes?
All right, Mr. Chair, through you. I will put forward a motion to approve this application with the following modifications. Variance number four, the proposed lot coverage be amended to 35 decimal 74 percent. Variance number six, the proposed front yard landscaping be amended to 50 decimal 89 percent. Variance number seven is eliminated. Variance number 10 is eliminated, and subject to the conditions of the urban forestry memorandum attached.
Just, when you say eliminated, you mean refused?
Refused.
On number 10, just for...
Correct, yep.
Okay.
And, yes, and we'll put in a further modification to allow, require a 1.5 meter privacy screen on the east side of the second story balcony.
Okay. All right. Do I have a... Measured from...
Measured from the, the deck of the balcony.
Good stuff. Measured from the deck of the balcony? Floor?
Floor. Sure, floor of the balcony. Happy with that.
Would you accept a friendly amendment? Planning had also asked that you develop substantially in accordance with the site plan?
Normally, I wouldn't have a problem with that, but with the refusal of number 10, I don't know that...
You don't think it would? Okay, fair enough.
All right. All right, we got a motion. Do I have a second or for the motion? Okay, Mr. Niffel seconds that. All in favor of the motion? All right, that's unanimous. The application is approved in part as modified with condition.
Thank you very much. Have a great afternoon.
You as well. Okay, finishing up our last two items of the morning. Item number eight, 166 Lord Seaton Road. The purpose of the application is to legalize two recently built sheds in the rear yard. Two variances for rear yard setback on file, material from the applicant, and a report from community planning. We have our agent or applicant with us?
Hello?
Hello?
Hello. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. This is Nafu Zazan Galbari. I'm the applicant.
All right. Your address?
T. D. Apple, Lord George, Pat Thornhill.
All right. I'm going to ask my colleagues whether they'd like a presentation from you. And I just confirm you are aware of the community planning report and have no issue with the recommendation noted?
Yes, correct.
All right, very good. Okay, so I don't see a request for a presentation. If it's all right with you, we can move this into committee?
Yes.
All right, let's take this into committee. Ms. Sankar?
Should there be no other comments from colleagues, I can put forward a motion? The only thing is that I do hope that the applicant had seen the staff report that their item number two be developed substantially in accordance with the side, site plan drawing. So, if they're okay with that, I can put forward a motion to approve this application that I do believe meets the four tests, and make it subject to the July 17 staff report where variance number two, the minimum rear yard setback for the shed, be developed substantially in accordance with the site plan.
All right. Do I have a second or Mr. Niffel? All in favor? That's unanimous. That application is approved. All right. We have one more item. It's 12:22. I need a, just a two-minute relief break. Apologize, guys. We'll be back at 12:25. All right, it's 12:25. We're back. Finishing up the last item of our morning session is item number nine. 17 Corwin Crescent. Purpose of the application is to... Oh. We have some technical issues. We're online now? All right. All right, just recapping, we are on item number nine, the last item of our morning session. The property address is 17 Corwin Crescent, and the purpose of the application is to construct a new two-story detached dwelling with an integral garage, front porch, and rear covered deck. Variances include east and west side yard setbacks, east side yard setback for a deck, side main wall height, building length, building depth, front yard setback, lot coverage, driveway width, platform encroachment into a rear yard setback, platform encroachment into an east side yard setback, front stair width and rear stair width. On file, I see material from the applicant, a memo from transportation, and a memo from urban forestry. We have our agent or applicant with us?
Good afternoon, everyone. You have your applicant here, David Lasserson of 17 Corwin Crescent.
Welcome, Mr. Lasserson. Sir, I'm going to ask for a presentation. We will get the clock up for you whenever you're ready.
Yes, I think it's easily demonstrated through the site plan. That's something that can be brought up, I'm not sure.
Yes, staff, can we bring up the site plan?
I'll, I'll start to speak to it, but the first one, items one through seven have actually been proposed in conjunction with previously approved setbacks, heights, and building length and depth that has been accepted in the neighborhood, specifically within our area of the street. The driveway variance number eight has intended to maintain an existing driveway that perhaps may not, we weren't aware of being a, a variance, but the, there is no intent for a curb cut, which is consistent with the letter received from the transportation department in, with no objections. Coming to number nine, the rear yard setback is consistent again with previously, or precedents that's been set within the neighborhood, and similar with number 10 being just that the stairs of the front and rear decks are wider than two meters or the permitted allowance, which are encroaching into the setbacks as well. So, in, in kind of a quick summary, there has been precedent set on the street for very similar coverages, very similar setbacks and depths. I did have a chance to speak with community planning on the application, as the, there was an original site plan submitted that there were a few aggressive items, which were items one, two, five, six, and eight, which we did resubmit a site plan to be in, more in line with the previously approved decisions in the past. So those are the highlighted in this site plan here to reflect what was more consistent with the neighborhood.
Do you have any physical addresses to support the length and depth? You noted they were taken from other approvals in the area?
Yeah, and I can reference even 14 Corwin Crescent. There's a decision in order dated May 3, 2019, in which the variances that were being sought in that specific application were reviewed and analyzed at TLAB and considered appropriate and meeting the four tests.
Okay. Other questions? Mr. Niffel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the report of the trans, no, the Development Engineering Department, in their comments, they've said, "Based on the proposed site plan, existing driveway and firm cut appear to be maintained. While an existing tree is missing from the submitted survey and submitted site plans, this is, this requires to be confirmed." There does appear to be a tree stump, but no tree that I'm aware of. Can you speak to that, please?
Yes, correct. There is an, there was an existing relatively diseased larger tree in the front yard. It came down in a storm several years back. It was discussed and reviewed with urban forestry. I believe that is condition numbers two and three that have been imposed through urban forestry, which have the full intent to, to meet.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay. Prepared to move into committee now? All right. Thank you, sir. Let's take this into committee.
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Vazali.
Based on the explanation of the applicant was provided, I think it's a supportive application. Also mentioned about the forestry conditions that's going to address those concerns about, that was raised. Also about the, I believe, transportation, no objections, but they have some conditions which I think they're, they're in the procedure can be followed as well. So for that reason, I think that the application is satisfied for test. Forgot to ask if there are any comments from my colleagues?
Thank you, Mr. Vazali. I, if I may jump in, I, I have a little concern with the length and depth. And, you know, the reason I bring that up is you just look at the... You look at what's left. I mean, it's a hundred and, a hundred and thirty-foot deep lot. Is, it's a pretty, it's a good lot depth in the city of Toronto, and I'm, I'm really surprised to see essentially what's left of the rear yard. I'm also, I have a little bit of concern with 14 Corwin Crescent, which is a TLAB order that was brought up by the applicant, citing that the order permitted variance for length and depth. But I'm just going to put forth that 14 Corwin, this is a property that, where the length and depth is as a result of a bump out at the back. And I just, I, I think it's incredibly... And I just, I'd, I think it's incredibly deceiving to say, you know, you have a, a variance that was approved at, let's say, twenty-one meters on a adjacent property. Proposed twenty-one meters, um, to accommodate essentially the entire rear main wall for a good portion of the, the rear main wall of the building, um, and compare it to something that really only facilitated a, a small bump out on a small portion of the building. Um, it feels just a little bit cramped, uh, and then I also look at the adjacency of fifteen and nineteen, and while I, I do accept this as area in transition, you know, number fifteen, it's very likely, uh, will see some development in the future. And then the relationship of that massing to both of the rear yards just seems extreme, and I, I question like really what's left in the rear yard by the time you put that massing in there.
Mr. Chair, can I just, sorry, interrupt you very quickly?
Sure.
This was one of the files that I believe you received, a late staff report that was submitted this morning?
Ah, thank you for bringing that up, uh, Mr. Deputy Secretary Treasurer. Uh, perhaps staff can pull up the staff report? All right. Uh, members, I just want to ask, are you, you're up to date familiar with this, or perhaps I need to ask the applicant or agent if they have seen this and give them an opportunity to comment on it? Uh, just to confirm, uh, staff, this, this came in this morning?
That's correct.
All right, I'm going to pull this out of committee. Uh, I, before we get any further, uh, I, I'd like to ask our agent, uh, if he is aware of this letter. Give him an opportunity to look at it as well.
Uh, this is the first time I'm seeing this letter, unfortunately.
Okay.
However, it does appear consistent with the conversations I have had with community planning. Where, and I, I, I spoke to this, um, a little bit, which I, I like the opportunity now to elaborate, that items one or variances one, two, three, four, and five were discussed, um, uh, after our initial submission, and revision, which were the yellow highlights shown on the site plan, um, were to be more in line with the decision at fourteen Corwin. And this, I, I believe that this is reflecting that those adjustments and, um, um, support for those adjustments, if I've understood this correct.
Okay, so you, you don't have any, uh, issue with the recommendations noted in the community planning report?
Well, it's, it, it is, this is in line with what our, our submission is, so.
Okay.
I'm going to, I'd like to go detail maybe, just to make sure I haven't missed anything. Side yard setbacks on the east and west side are being proposed at one point three seven. That's items one and two. Item three, the building length of twenty point eight seven meters is being proposed.
Mr. Chair, can we just slow it down and recognize that the applicant, he's making changes now?
Yeah, if I understand, he's already made the changes and he's just demonstrating that they're in line with the community planning report.
If it's different than our public notice, he should formally.
Okay.
Read it out.
Uh, sir, can I confirm, uh, we're, you're making, are you making modifications that are in line with the community planning report?
Correct.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, I, I let me understand that, that I've, uh, clarified that correctly.
No, that's fine, I.
Okay.
Yeah, fair enough. I, I, I'm just going to say this, I, I, in this respect, because I have a staff report coming in at the time that it's coming in, I'm going to give the applicant a little bit of latitude. It, it seems that they're in agreement, uh, with the modifications or the recommendations being made, so I, I will allow it, but I, with caution, I will say it, the fact that this is being reviewed on the floor during a hearing, um, frankly, is, is, it questions whether or not it's appropriate even. Um, but in the interest of trying to move things forward, seeing as the applicant appears to be in agreement with, uh, community planning, I will allow it. Uh, so let's.
Ms. Senkhar has her hand up.
Uh, yes, Ms. Senkhar.
Hi, Mr. Chair. Um, thanks for raising that. Um, I'm worried, and I'm only concerned because I feel like we're putting the applicant in a position to be forced really quickly to read this and say, yes, yes, no, no, you know, and, and make whatever changes that's needed to satisfy a, a staff report, and I don't think that's procedurally fair.
Yeah.
I, I just want to share that in, even if he's in agreement, I feel as if maybe, should we not say, could we defer this? You know, signee died to the next time so that he can have a chance to look at it, anyone in opposition can see what those changes are, um.
Let me, maybe let's ask, maybe let's ask him that. I, I agree with you on that, but I, perhaps maybe just ask him because maybe they don't want a deferral. Um, and, uh, you know, I, I just want to be mindful of their timelines as well, but I, when I, you know, when I made the comment that I'm going to give the applicant some latitude, as far as I'm concerned, if the applicant felt that this report, uh, they didn't agree with the recommendations, frankly, I just wouldn't allow it. I would just get rid of this report altogether. It, it just, I, i- if they're in agreement, I'm open to, uh, hear what the applicant has to say and help to try to facilitate uh, an agreement, but if there's some opposition here, the fact that it's come in when it's come in, I just don't think it's fair to consider it at this point. Uh, is that, Ms. Senkhar, are you in agreement, are you?
Well, uh, only to say that, um, I would like to offer that the applicant really speaks up now to let us know because sometimes folks, um, may not say that. They're just going to scramble and try to appease what staff says on the spot, and they're also answering to, uh, you know, their clients as well, uh, to move this along, so I just feel that we have to give him that opportunity to really review this and say to us, yes or no, or even to have a conversation with his clients, something, uh.
Fair enough, yeah, and I'm, and if they're not comfortable, I am prepared to disregard the recommendations that came in when they came in. So I'll just say that. I don't know if city staff are listening, but that's just, just sort of where we're at. Okay, so I'm going to pull this out of committee. I want to go back to the agent, and I want to ask whether or not, uh, they are in agreement with the recommendations, uh, in the report because it seems like there was some discussion that facilitated what's before us. Uh, and if there is any concern with it coming in late, uh, please do, uh, speak up and let us know.
No, I, I very much appreciate the opportunity to, to review this in, in length or in more detail. Um, I, I will provide some clarification that although this notice came out this morning, there was some, uh, previous communication between myself and community planning, and I've understood that this letter is consistent with that communication.
Okay.
The, the, the information in this notice is consistent with the site plan we had on, on screen and is conforming to the, um, support that's provided through this letter.
Okay, so.
And there were adjustments to an original submission that was circulated with a very close time to the original submission.
Okay, so, uh, my next question then is, uh, are you in agreement with the modifications noted in the staff report?
They are, i- if not, uh, more than agreement, it is being presented. It is, it's already incorporated into the design.
Okay, so, uh, for procedural purposes, at the request of, uh, and for city staff, because they're documenting this, uh, let's go to the public notice, uh, and please just take us through which variances are being modified, uh, from the public notice so that we ensure, uh, what is before us.
Perfect.
All right. Starting with, uh, variance number one.
So the public notice, uh, proposed variance was for a one point two meter setback, si- sorry, east side yard setback. The minimum required is one point eight meter, and the revised setback is one point three seven.
Okay. Any change to number two?
Similar comments to number two, where the proposed west side yard setback has been revised to one three seven.
One three seven as well, okay.
The next one that's in the staff report is item five. A proposed building length of twenty-one meters, an allowable seventeen meters, and a revised setback of twenty point eight. I'm just going to get the, uh, double check the exact, uh, revised value.
I see the report notes eight seven.
Eight seven, sorry, eight seven.
Okay, so in line with the planning, yep.
Correct. And number six is a building depth, original proposed at twenty point nine seven, and allowed or permitted nineteen meters, and a revised twenty point eight. If you don't mind jumping back to the staff report, we can look at that exact number, twenty point eight four.
Thank you, yep.
Now, as a, as a result of these adjustments, that also reduced the lot coverage, uh, variance number eight, which was originally proposed at forty one point seven on a, versus a permitted thirty, which were now down to a forty point six. Correct.
All right, and I presume no concern, uh, if, uh, we were to approve the application as modified uh, to tie, uh, substantially in accordance with the revised site plan drawing dated July seventeenth? That is the most recent version, presume?
Uh, that's correct.
All right, very good. Okay, thank you for that clarification. Uh, sir, uh, if it's all right, uh, I just checked with my colleagues. We're ready to head back into committee if there's no further questions of our agent. Yes, Mr. Nitfil?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, this is perhaps an unfair question, so if you don't want to answer, don't answer it. Um, what I don't understand, I, I still, I share some of the concerns that the chairman has with the building length. But what baffles me is you proposed twenty-one meters, and the planning department wants you to change it to twenty point eight seven meters. What does that little difference do? Wh- wh- why that, why does that change things? It, it seems to me that the difference is almost immeasurable.
Uh, um, I, I don't ha- I don't, you're right, I don't know if I have a, a very good answer to that. Um, uh, I think this has been more of an exercise of matching precedence with what has been characteristically, um, changing throughout the neighborhood, and that there's a specific limit that has been established that should not be passed.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I appreciate it.
All right, any other questions? None, okay. Thank you for the clarification. Uh, let's take this into committee. We, all right. We had a motion on the floor.
Yes, um, my motion basically.
We came out of committee, so that's, the motion is done.
Yes, so since the changes have been made, um, and the changes are very, basically minor changes, I stick to the motion that I, uh, have, so with those conditions that I mentioned, I guess, uh.
With or without modification?
Uh, with a modification.
With modification, okay.
Since the applicant, since the applicants actually, um, agreed to those modifications as, as well, so forward a motion to approve this application as amended, um, do we need to read them again, or the staff have? One more time, right?
Or in line with the community planning report?
Yes, so I think if we can have them, um, on, if the staff can show it as well, that would be great. But the variance number one changed to one point thirty-seven, variance number two changed to one point thirty-seven, variance number five changed to twenty point eighty-seven, variance number six changed to twenty point eighty-four, variance number eight changed to forty point six percent. Did I get that right?
And, uh, substantially, or tied to?
And, yes, substantially, I can't see it from there. But, um, and tied to the, uh, develop, yes, let's not move it, yes, live, develop substantially in accordance with the revised site plan drawing, submitted to the company adjustment on July seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five, attached as attachment number one to the staff report. Uh, I believe there are conditions on of on forestry, number two and three as well. And the engineering memo, I believe, there are, there are no objections, but there are some conditions.
All right.
That's the motion.
All right, do I have a seconder for that motion? Ms. Senkhar, thank you. All in favor? All right, opposed, Mr. Allison and Mr. Nitfil, the motion carries, uh, the application as modified is approved with condition. All right, uh, thank you, everybody. That concludes our morning slot. Uh, we will resume at two P M, uh, with item number ten.